It is two o'clock and this meeting will come to order. First one, first time in a business that was rolled along, I think all the trustees and treasurer are here. And now we will go into the budget discussion. Is this just general budget discussion or was it more focused on the U R D?
And I just thought I would, I'm sorry. I just thought I would present this version and then, and then the action is the, if the board wants to accept the new construction revision. So. Before you, the first column is what was approved for fiscal year 23. The middle column is where we left it before at the end of our last meeting. And then the third column has one C line, which is property taxes expiring U R D growth. And that was eighty one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. And my understanding from previous meetings is that the general consensus is that the board would like to add to the collection line item if additional revenues were received. And so that is where the bulk of the expenditures is currently listed, but that is for discussion. And then I wanted to bring to the board's attention, there's one other yellow line item. And that is line sixty eight for continuing education. We did receive a request from an employee that is finishing their master's degree. And so as is in our personnel manual, we will offset up to half of the tuition expenses. And so that is also for the board's consideration. But I just wanted to bring to your attention that we did receive that.
I'd like to state, I don't fully understand the U R D refund, if we'll call it that, offset and the impact. Meaning we can take the money, we cannot take the money. If we take the money, that's easy to understand. If we don't take the money, what are the ramifications? Is there any long-term issue? Does that affect how much money we get next year? I obviously didn't comprehend these twenty pages of what we just got with our agenda. So it's mysterious and I think U R Ds are very complex to understand. Absent and closing it out financially, they're, they're very complicated animals. So I'll need a little more education on it.
I spent good half an hour on the phone with both Alicia and Jolena in the auditor's office about an hour ago. Cause they were contradicting on their two calls, kind of what this was. But they put it on speakerphone, so they both agreed. And my, I, I think they're, they themselves are a little confused, but.
I just want to say, I did, I did call the office on Friday when I learned about this. And I had, and Jolena was the name I got, I didn't get a call back, maybe because other people called, I guess. And the treasurer, I understand, was out of town and I think the assistant treasurer, so. I feel like, well, hopefully we're getting competent guidance. So I just thought, I did make a shot at it and so I didn't get an answer.
I tried the treasurer, I tried having an email so he'd get back and he's gone. Anyway, the assistant treasurer is gone also. Anyway, for some reason, the auditor's office seems to be knowing this. But my understanding, Jolena explained it and then Alicia agreed. This is a one-time, they call it rebate, but I don't think it's really a rebate. It's a one-time chance for a taxing district to go collect extra money. And we get up to eighty percent of what we would normally have gotten in a regular year. The future years, but because we haven't been able to tax them for 20 years, the legislature gave us a one-time chance to go tax them. So it is a tax increase. It's not, if we don't take it, it's going to decrease people's taxes. It's a tax increase one time because the taxing district has not been able to get it. From that, from now.
Could you clarify with them, when you said we haven't gotten it from them, who, who are you talking about?
I guess it would be the property owners and the U R D.
Okay, gotcha.
That, that, those taxes are at least the increase from one, 20 years ago when they started. All that increased tax went to the U R D and that's what funded their development or their advertising or something. I don't know all they did with it. For example, East Coast Falls. Bill, my understanding is they had a lot to do with building the bridge across, the overpass across the freeway. Anyway, we have, the CLN has not been able to get it, get those taxes for 20 years. So this is a one-time ability the legislature gave us and statutes to get eighty percent of it. But we don't get that again. So it's a one-time thing and it's not, it, it raises everybody's taxes in the whole county to collect that. It's not something they're already paying. Every, everyone, including the U R D property owners are going to pay taxes this year. But this is an additional one-time thing. And that's the way they basically agreed to it or agreed. So I, for all I know, the growth includes the property taxes of the U R Ds. They can't really even explain that to me very well. But the growth is supposed to represent the property, the taxes we get on the increased property value of the county. So that should include the U R Ds. But this is kind of a separate one-time thing. The statutes give us the right to.
Can I ask if our director could give us some information? I'm certain you've been involved with U R Ds before, we have, you know?
U R Ds are not uncommon, but they're not an everyday kind of thing. So the fact that this goes back to 2002, again, I think Janelle was telling me that, I think the last time we had one close was like 2012 or the?
Just before me, so.
Just a little bit, 2011. So just sort of, sort of like this scope or the frequency of them. And I know that Janelle has also been talking with the county about the new construction and the value of it. We did receive our final numbers on, was it the 24th?
For the last week.
On Monday, the 24th, I believe. And it does outline each of the columns. And that's where we really identified the U R D closure line item. I don't know if he wanted to clarify anything from what Mr. Plank said.
My understanding of the eighty one thousand is that over the course of the 20 years, that we did not get to capture growth from those properties in the U R Ds. This is our opportunity from the time that those properties went into the U R D and their value now, that we get to capture that growth of just those U R Ds. Because the U R D growth from the expiring U R D has never been included in the regular new construction growth number. So it's not part of that estimated growth, it's separate.
If the U R D had not happened, we would have gotten this, is that what?
Over the course of the years.
Over the course of the years. Okay, so this is just what we, the growth that we did not get from that.
From the time the property left our taxing ability to now, there is an increase in property value. And this is our one opportunity to be able to capture what we missed out on 20 years of new construction growth.
Yeah, it's my general guess that when they create the U R D, I think the area that's been designated doesn't pay taxes, I think, for a certain amount of time. And that, I guess, encourages developers to put money in, I'm not sure. And they would get no revenue from that until they actually closes out, I don't know. And, and then that's, that was what I, I was reading about it once, a couple of years ago, when they were trying to do the hospital one down in Coeur d'Alene. And they're not easy to understand, but you have a better idea of how it works because?
They, they, the county gets the taxes from the value that it was at when the U R D started. So if it was just a bunch of farm fields without any buildings, it would just be the field. And they keep getting that, the county keeps getting that for 20 years. It's the change in property values for over the 20 years. But no one in the auditor office explained this as growth. They just said it's a state statute that the legislature put in as a chance for us to go collect some taxes one time. They didn't say, they didn't call it growth at all. But I, I don't, the only place it comes from, those two women said, is from an increase in tax to the taxpayers of the county.
When we, when we can conceivably receive these funds, by the way, I'm assuming next fiscal year because we're talking about fiscal '24?
They, they would be levied for FY '24.
How did you get the idea that it was part of growth? Cause that makes sense to me.
That's how it's defined on the form that I have to turn into the state tax commission. Is that it's expiring U R D, new construction that, I mean, we refer to new construction as growth. And so it's the expiring U R D, new construction. So it's the, the difference in value from when they left us as a taxing property to when they come back. Now we can recapture what we missed out on for 20 years.
So the statute is an arbitrary, no, it's not arbitrary. It's based on something and it's based on the growth of the property value.
Yes.
Okay.
So these aren't, they may be rare, but they're not unusual. And is there any kind of negative reason to not want to take it? Is it the builders paying, paying this or is it? Cause I don't know what this area is, if it's commercial or commercial and homes. So is it, what's the negative of taking this? If there, if that's what we're trying to figure out?
My understanding of U R Ds is really that it's to offset the entities that were impacted by it. So it's, it's in statute and it's, again, it's why we have the ability to levy at that rate to offset that we haven't received that in the past. And then moving forward, it just goes into our standard base of taxes that we collect on. And so as he was saying, you know, it's a one-time, it's in statute that says we get eighty percent. That's different than any other type of growth or new construction that's stated, that's determined in statute at that state level. So I don't know that there's a negative consequence. It's like taking another form of growth. It offsets us for individuals in that service area using our resources. And the other entities that were impacted specifically in this one were EMS, fire, school districts. So we're not the only entity that is going to be perhaps receiving the new construction funds for, for that. So I think it's in line with the best interest of the organization to utilize that, especially this year. Ultimately, by, by increasing the number or having all of those at all of those areas back in our tax base, it will eventually lower the levy rate for everybody because we have more households, more. So ultimately the levy rate will go down as we move forward.
Okay, and it looks like it's about four thousand dollars per year if, if this is affected by 20 years. So I'm just saying, if you broke it down, this eighty one thousand is approximately four thousand
If yours.
Of, of the past years, four thousand per year, just for, for everybody to have that in their head.
Okay. So I spoke to someone in the treasurer's office Friday. She said, if we don't take it and it goes to foregone and that means that we can conceivably take it next year?
If we don't levy what we are entitled to or have the option to, then it can become foregone.
It can become foregone, but the laws have changed to where you have to have a resolution stating that you want to reserve that amount for foregone for the future at any time. And that is not something that we necessarily have done. We do have a foregone balance from before they changed the law, but we've never taken it.
Okay. Anyway, so she said that if we do take it, it would definitely increase the, the money that was owed by taxpayers. And then government's proper role isn't to increase itself and the burden on taxpayers. Otherwise, I would absolutely love to add this to materials. I just don't want to increase the burden on the taxpayers.
Does anybody have any idea how much of the burden a taxpayer?
Eighty three thousand dollars. Eighty one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars.
It'd be almost, it'd be 1.6 or 1.7% increase if we would have taken a 2%.
So what does that mean for, for a hundred thousand dollars? Does anybody know? I can't imagine that eighty thousand dollars is much.
Last year.
So this was, so this is put, they put it in, they put it in statute in order, because we didn't receive, we received no money from the U R Ds is what they're saying. And, and so there, if we're not going back and receiving the taxes that we didn't receive, we're just receiving growth. So it is, it is to offset some of what we did not receive. And we didn't have a choice that that was taken, that property was taken out. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't fully understand, where does that money go if we don't take it? I mean, what, what, what happens?
It stays with the taxpayers. That they'll, this is not taxes that are already collected that they're now going to give us. They already use that in the U R D. This is increased tax this year. Basically close to 2%, 1.7% increase this year. The taxpayers have to pay to cover this. They, they said that in the office, they made it really clear that, that's the only place it comes from is increased taxes.
So is it, this is confusing. It's all taxpayers would, would have to pay more or just the ones in the URL or U R D area?
All.
So how is, how is that? Why would the ones that were exempt from paying for 20 years?
They didn't get, they still paid, but it went to the U R D to build the bridge or build signs or whatever and build roads. That money's gone.
Okay.
This is increased money that the taxpayers have.
So a certain area that was designated U R D, all, yeah. That's, all of the taxes from that area went to build bridges or what you're saying, all the different things. But it's not like all of post falls or all of, it's just a certain area.
Yeah, the center point one is basically from Capella's, I think, over the.
So these, these people were paying taxes the whole time, it just didn't go to the taxing district.
Difference between what they were paying when it started and and in the, each year it went to that difference.
And that, that sounds right to you guys? I mean, does anybody have anything to say about that? Does that sound right?
Um, we did not receive funds in those areas for individuals or properties that were receiving library service or fire service. The funds were directed towards the urban renewal projects.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, so I ask a question. When you say there's a 1.7% increase, a 1.7% increase of what?
That eighty two thousand or whatever it is, is the equivalent of us saying we wanted to, would want to take 1.7% this year.
Right here, 1%.
1% is flat fifty thousand. And that, that money can only come from taxpayers this coming year. Which I, I thought maybe it was money that already existed. They called it a rebate, but it's, it's not a rebate.
Okay, so the timer went off and we are supposed to move on to the next new construction, which is very related to what we're already talking about. I just want to make sure everyone's got their questions answered.
Well, I have another question. So if we go the route of the foregone tax, foregone taxes, does that leave it in, on hold for us to conceivably take it a later date? Because I don't really think we have a solid understanding of this. And when we do, I'm happy to make a decision, but we have a lot of different people, different understandings here. And if we can put this money in advance and hold it aside, then to me, we didn't lose it yet. We still have the option to regain it, I assume, at some later date. And if we don't decide to take it, I guess it's that, that much less the taxpayers have to pay in the regular taxes, I guess. Because it's put into the, I guess, the general fund, I don't know where it goes, but.
So having been part of a taxing district for a long time, foregone taxes are highly controversial and highly controversial. And they're so highly controversial that there are legislators who want to stop that, to stop that from happening. So I, I would absolutely not want to put it in there thinking, oh, we can go get it whenever else we want. Because that also increases the tax burden on taxpayers. So that, I think that if, if we don't want to irritate taxpayers, not putting things in, not assuming we're going to use foregone is a really good idea.
And I'd also add that if we take this now and next year decide to take a 0%, we would take it again next year. It would become our base. So we would increase the 1.7% this year and next year if we took zero, we would be taking that again. The only way to get rid of it is to take a minus 1.7% next year. So if you take it, it's now our base.
So if we did a resolution to reserve foregone and the legislature changed that, it wouldn't go into effect. I would think that it would be grandfathered in because we've already resolved that.
I certainly don't think that we can think about what the legislature might or might not do. I mean, I, you know, I, you know what I mean? We can't plan on based on, well, we, we're pretty sure they decide that. I think that we have to assume that if the legislature disbands foregone, it would disband foregone. I mean, we just have, would have to assume that as a worst case scenario.
And isn't this eighty one, just a one-time, eighty one thousand, just a one-time thing? I mean, if we took that this year, it wouldn't be there next year.
But it'd be the base, right? I think what Tim's saying, it's kind of like compounded. So you took our budget we had already established, we had another eighty some thousand dollars on top of that for this year, or sorry, for the upcoming year. And then I think everything in the future, meaning the fiscal 2025, if we took a 0% increase, we still are going to have that 1.7% increase already factored in. And if we took a 1% increase on top of that, it's going to be indefinitely larger budget, I think, if I, if that's a correct understanding.
If that's what you're thinking, I mean, there's been times before where, I don't even know if Rochelle and I were on the board yet, but it was told to us, oh, there was that big jump that year because some amount of money came in. But I don't think that the board has to think of it as that's established. You know, if we added that to materials and next year we can have as much money and materials went down, we'd remember that this is why we added to materials, why materials went back up to where it should be. Does that make sense?
I just think if we don't take an increase in 2025, we're going to get as much, we're going to take the 2024 budget we've approved, so it's a tentative, add it at eighty three, eighty one thousand three ninety. And we might guess that if we took zero increase in 2025, we would still get whatever we have now plus eighty one thousand dollars plus growth is my guess.
Yeah, it's whatever we levy this year will be the basis for next year. So if we levy an extra eighty two thousand, next year, the starting is that number that we levy.
Is that how it works, Janelle?
It becomes the base.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
I would also like to point out that we have absolutely slashed the things that people walk in the door for. And that by, by not taking that, by taking it, we could increase our collection appropriately. But one of the things that we haven't looked at, talked about in the least is our facilities. And those, I mean, we're nickel and dining it when we talk about, when we spend so much time on programs, when we've got old buildings and that absolutely no attention has been paid to them this year. Absolutely no look at them. And to keep talking about edging away at the base is maybe a popular idea, but also it doesn't help aging buildings. So this isn't, this isn't, this isn't an amount. It isn't even what we should have gotten had this not been, this is only, this is only considering in growth. And I just, it is, it is not a hard thing for taxpayers to consider. It may make you guys look good, but it, it is not responsible in terms of trying to sustain a library district.
We aren't the only taxing district, so if everyone raises their taxes a little bit, it's a, it's a big heap on taxpayers.
I was just going to comment that, you know, I don't, you know, initially, I think it was proposed to, to take some portion from the carry forward to help with the current year or the next, next year's expenses. But I don't think, I think that was mixed, thinking that we were afraid that that fund balance, you know, there, there wasn't enough clarity as to whether the fund balance should be messed with or not. And I don't know if that's, we could take a closer look at.
Well, I've, I've asked for that five times and I want to put a motion forward for consensus vote to ask Alexa to provide it. I don't know why I have to do it that way, but that's after this, I guess.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure that it would need a motion. We can just have the question and then consensus on it.
Is it on the agenda? Is this on the agenda today?
No.
So I'm thinking we should move on to the next section, which says, except final new construction property tax income and increase of eighty one thousand three hundred and ninety due to the expiration of the Center Point Urban Renewal District action item. So I guess we do a motion and then we discuss the motion.
Okay, I'll move that we do accept the property tax income of eighty one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars due to the expiration of the Center Point Urban Renewal District.
Sorry, I didn't write that all down.
I'm just, it's right here.
Okay, so just reread the, yeah, okay. It has been moved to accept final new construction property tax income and increase of eighty one thousand three hundred and ninety due to the expiration of the Center Point Urban Renewal District. Do we have more discussion on that?
I definitely am not a fan of the not carried forward, the flying back, what is it called? You know, yeah, foregone, thank you. I don't know if there would ever be a point that I would say yes to foregone. So that one is for sure off the table for me, putting it in foregone. And I obviously see that there's a lot of concern with the members of this eighty one thousand. What if, mostly because of the base price that it establishes, would anybody be open to taking a portion of that instead of all of it? If you're thinking of taking zero, would you think of taking a portion of it? And that would raise the base price, I understand that now. But would you be interested in taking a portion?
And I don't want to raise taxes on the taxpayers.
It's my general thought that we could have raised or taken an increase also this budget discussion meeting long before today, before we found out about this U R D. And if we wanted a half a percent or four percent or three percent, we would have done that. I think we've met our budget requirements and expectations, including. including taking the growth, which is almost a hundred thousand, ninety thousand dollars. And I guess because of the mystery as to how this money is handled, this U R D money, I'm not inclined to taking it, but I, I am very happy if we can put it on aside into foregone, if that's able to be recaptured. So if we find out later on, oh, by not taking that, we're going to get less money next year, or maybe we have an emergency, well, it's another way of putting some carry forward money in the bank. And if we don't get it, well, we weren't banking on it anyway. But I, I think we met our budget expectations going through multiple meetings over the last several weeks or month there. And I'm not inclined to taking the money just because it's there. And if it goes into the, to the general coffers there and to the general funds of the county, well, I assume that means that there'll be less, our taxes are not going to be raised as much as it could have been or would have been.
What is it, what's required to put it into foregone?
A resolution.
So, and we still would have time to do a resolution?
The resolution can be made at the same time that you accept the budget.
Okay.
Two questions, Janelle. They, when they talked to me on Monday, they were quoting eighty two thousand. I don't have the number written down, but a different number. And I don't know if that was because the, uh, Shoshone County was added to it. Do you know if that number, they didn't seem to have that number.
I still don't have Shoshone's numbers. They have gone through some staffing changes and they are down people. So I still don't have their numbers, but I did review everything on the L two with everything I have and I lost your name, the gal in the auditor's office, Alicia, thank you. And we went through the L two with all the numbers that we do have and we match. So that eighty one, three ninety, her and I both agreed on. That may, I don't know that it'll change when I get Shoshone's numbers. I don't think so because it has nothing to do with Shoshone.
The other, she said two U R Ds and your, this was referring to one. I don't know whether the other one just wasn't much value and that was added in. Because there's East Post Falls too.
So what I get is a spreadsheet of the sum total. They don't list out each separate one, so I just have a sum total of the number that I plug into the form.
And the other thing I was going to say, I think you don't have any, we don't have any choice but to take the number they have, just like the growth ninety thousand, take it. What we mess with is we want to take a minus one half percent then or something. So then we have to get, it gets more complicated, I think. I don't think you can just take part of that, but maybe I'm wrong. I think you have, we would have to ask to take a minus half percent to get part of it back.
I don't think that they have a way. That's been questioned before.
To do what, take partial?
Yeah, to do a minus.
Oh.
Oh, you can do a minus.
You can levy however much you want.
No.
It, that's, that's up to us. If, if you wanted to only levy for four million flat, that's all you're going to levy. But then you have reduced your taxing authority well until the future.
And that's because you can only go up three percent per year, right?
Okay, there is no further discussion. It has been moved to accept the final new construction property tax income and increase of eighty one thousand, three hundred and ninety due to the expiration of the Center Point Urban Renewal District. All those in favor?
Other, I'm sorry, are there two options on that though? I mean, either we take it, don't take it, or we do the foregone? So I don't know how that works, but is there more than one decision here?
Yeah, we just have the motion that's on the table or on, or whatever, that's in front of us right now. And then if we have other ideas, we would, we would do something else and then put on that. Anyway, so all those in favor of taking the increase of eighty one thousand, three hundred and ninety, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, all those opposed, say.
Nay.
Nay.
Then I'm going to move that we.
Actually, I'm, I'm first supposed to say that the motion has not carried. Okay, and then go ahead.
That I would like us to look at, put it into, into foregone in case that we should. I mean, I'm not in favor of it. I think it's going to irritate taxpayers beyond belief, but I would like to not lose it. And putting it into foregone would be the way to do that. But we would need a resolution in order to do that.
Well, I'm understanding irritating taxpayers. I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that. Is it because we didn't take the money? Is that what you're saying? Or is it to do with the foregone mechanics?
Yeah, it's to do with the foregone mechanics. It's not a popular taxing idea, you know? So it, I don't know if it, you know, if it would work. I'd hate, I hate to lose this money. And if that is the only way that we can at least not lose it, I would like to do that.
And I just want to say about the foregone, why it would be so irritating to taxpayers is because it's almost like if you don't take it right now, it's like you putting on a show and then you sneak it back. And I'm not saying that's what would happen, but that's what it looks like. Like it's a big thing in the newspaper, they didn't take it. And then a year and a half later, you know, by the way, let's get that back. You know, then we didn't really not take it. So I would oppose to putting it during the resolution because why not? But I don't think I would ever vote for foregone, which I've said several times in the last few months.
Yeah, thank you. That, that did make it clear. Not only for it, but I, I would like to reserve it for the future just in case something unforeseen comes up, although hopefully that doesn't happen. I would want to sneak it, you know, to the taxpayers.
And I would be, I would be more comfortable making a solid yes or no if I had Tom been in person to give a presentation to this board and say, this is exactly how this works or doesn't work. And then I wouldn't want to sit on the fence in that point. But right now, there are a lot of different guesses kind of a little bit. No certainty, it sounds like, on exactly how this works. And so it's difficult to say, I, I want the money. Well, it's easy to say I want the money, but it's difficult to say I don't want it. I'm going to get thrown in the trash to this day, but it's not like. That's why, that's why I have a hard time making decisions. I don't really understand ramifications.
Who would be a competent person as far as you are concerned?
I would assume, I would assume the treasurer's office or the assistant treasurer because people are getting different interpretations from, because the two top people, I guess, are out for the week or something. And because they weren't there Friday either. But if we had that factual, solid explanation that we can all understand, personally, I could make a better decision, yes or no. But I'm not inclined to take any more money, to be honest with you. And I'm not doing to make myself look good or anybody else here. Either we need the money or we don't need the money and we have a budget. But if, if it's not gone by putting it into foregone, well, then it's still there in case we change our mind or something happens. Or we, I don't know what, how long can this thing foregone? If it goes in there, do we, do we tell the treasurer's office in January? Because we know we don't need the money anymore. Hey, you can have the money back. How does that, how does that work?
The legislature has limited how you can use foregone. There are rules and, and dollar amounts that you can use now. So you can't just all of a sudden say, oh, I want my eighty thou- eighty one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars in the next fiscal year because it, it has to go through levying. And the one time that you have your say to the state and what you're going to levy is when we submit our paperwork, the beginning of September. So you can't decide in January, oh, I want it now. You have to wait until the following levying fiscal period.
This time next year.
Yes.
Think of it this way. We had a chance of zero or I guess minus, but up to three percent that we could have taken. And we still could today, I guess. But we chose to stay at zero because we didn't want to increase the property tax or in, increase the taxes that we collected. We could have actually chosen, I guess, from what they told me to not take the growth, the ninety thousand. But this would be a way to take the three percent, the growth, and another eighty thousand. This is just another increase on the taxes, taxpayers. It's an increase whether you took 1.7% or whether you take this. It's just another, another increase. That it, the money doesn't exist. It, all the taxpayers in the county are going to pay for it.
I would offer, I'd say, an op- an option as well. We can have another meeting and I can try to get someone from the treasurer's office to attend or to have like a memo or some kind of written statement that explains a little bit more about what would happen. I, I hate to be making decisions without, with a lack of information. That might just be the librarian in me, but you know, we do have a little bit more time to consider if that's of interest.
Doesn't sound like the answer that we all got was that they would raise taxes.
Well, I, I was responding to Mr. Tom's question about he didn't have information and it was a mystery. So I, I guess everybody else does have a big sense.
You were asking to have information. If we placed it in foregone, what, how, what, what would happen if we took it out, et cetera? Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, when, when we could access it back again if we chose when we needed it. Because that, that always been working out. So it goes into foregone, I guess it's held in the van somewhere. You know, marked separately and then at some point we can get it back if nothing changed in terms of the law. And so I understand it wouldn't be till fiscal twenty five, is that correct?
So res- reserving in foregone is just a bookmark. The money has never been levied. The taxpayers have never paid it. And to take foregone, then you're going back and saying to the taxpayers, we want you to pay this now. You can only do it during the levy process, so once a year. Can't do it in the middle of the year. But the other part is, is the legislature has placed limits now on how you can use foregone and how much per year you can use it for.
So do we know what those are?
I can forward you, well, Alexa can forward everybody the county presentation that we received that Tim watched. And it talks about foregone and how much you can use each year and what the limits.
So if we levy, so say if we levy for FY twenty five, that eighty thousand dollars, we'd only get it over the course of the year, of course.
I would have to look. I'm not sure that you'd be able to take the full eighty one, three ninety.
Ever?
You can, you can, you can take a percent every year of foregone, but you can't just go in because we have a hundred and sixty some thousand in foregone now. We can't go in and just grab that whole hundred and sixty thousand. They have limits each year on how much you can take. And if it's for a capital project, you get a little bit more. If it's not for a capital project, you get less. But you can only take so much of your foregone every year until it's gone.
So if we take it right now, if we take this eighty one thousand right now, we can do whatever we want with it. I'm recalling this when we talked, when we were talking about a hundred and sixty thousand earlier this year. I, that only a very small portion of it could be used for operations. So that it can't, so we have, so if we took it now, if we took that eighty one thousand now, we could put it anyplace we wanted. And we get all of this right now. If we don't take it now and we put it into foregone, when we go to take it, then, then it seems like the bulk of it is for capital stuff. Is that right? Yeah.
The larger percentage use is for capital projects. If it's just operations, I believe it's one percent.
Yeah, it's a very small, it's a very small amount for operations. So basically, we would be, if we put it into foregone, we would be basically reserving it to receive a portion of it for capital expenditures for, over the next few years. Okay.
What's the hundred and sixty thousand dollars in current foregone, when you call that?
So prior to the legislature changing, if you didn't take everything that you were allowed to levy, it automatically went into foregone. The legislature changed it so that you have to have a resolution stating that, yes, I now want to reserve it for a later date. And then you have to have another resolution stating that, you know, now I want to take it and this is why I'm taking it.
I, I think no matter how I look at it, that it's another eighty some thousand dollars out of the taxpayer's wallet. So I'm, I'm leaning more towards not just saying, I, I probably say, no, I don't, I don't want to take it at all. Sorry, I changed my mind.
So Janelle, you said that we could do a resolution for the foregone when we accept the budget. So is that, that's the only time we, we would do that?
It could be done at any meeting as long as the resolution goes to the state with the levy paperwork. And that date is September.
So. And I'd like to just clear something up real quick. So actually, this eighty one thousand wouldn't be the, necessarily the attitude, the budget wouldn't be the new base because we can take, we could say next year, I know we already had the vote, but we could say next year, we're taking that amount back out to go to the original base. So I'm just making sure that everybody's clear that it doesn't automatically just make it the base. We say what the base is.
If you do zero, it's in the base. You have to go minus one point seven next year to take it out.
Well, like Janelle said, we could ask for four million instead of whatever we're asking for. So, so it doesn't necessarily, or it doesn't automatically just add to next year as well. Because it's what we ask for.
You can choose to reduce it, like she said. So, you know, the, the default is it adds to the base, but you as a board decide if that is what you want.
Right.
So if you don't want it in next year, then you reduce your base.
Okay, perfect. And I, I know we already voted, but I just want to make sure everybody understood that. But it doesn't automatically make it that we have to add that to our base.
But we can do that anyway next year. We can take a minus two percent.
Yes, correct, but that was part of the discussion is let's not add it now because then it's permanent and it's not permanent.
Zero is true.
Okay, so there's no further discussion. I have a question. So the, the next item, the revised fiscal year, my twenty four budget to add funds to operations and various other, that's the point. Okay. Well, then I guess we're going to do an agenda discussion and requests.
I don't know if this is the right place to talk about it, but what's this about security for the budget meeting? I don't understand where that came from, why all of a sudden we think we need it? And are we getting it?
You didn't get the email that you she answered.
No, I, I believe I got an email, but no, it was answering.
Laura Borner.
One of the guys.
Alexa, you answered. Didn't she answer?
We do not have security or any event or any purpose for the library. We have security monitoring of our alarm system.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the budget meeting. The, the emails about the budget meeting and some outside security. I'm just wondering where it even came from that we were going to have a problem. Why, why do people think we're going to have a problem at the meeting? We never have had a problem besides that one meeting, a little problem.
So Randy and I had a conversation with the lieutenant in charge of patrol to see if they can come because they've had, they've been called to come to some of our meetings by a trustee in the past. And so that was my question, can they come? He explained a lot of the details of policing, they're short staffed, right? They have limited resources. And so just generally, no, they can't. They did make some other recommendations for, from his experience in post falls for public meetings with the city and with planning and development and some other types of meetings that they had attended, some suggestions. They talked clearly about, or the individual talked clearly about de-escalation versus calling the police for a violation of our code of conduct or for crime.
Okay, I, I did read that. Okay, and I, I did read that response. I did. But what I'm asking is why in the very first place, we thought we were going to need it for Thursday's budget meeting?
There, there's been a large call out for, to the public. So we, you know, even though.
What does that mean? Do you have social media or something or what are you talking about?
The library sent out, within their regular emails that they send out, telling everyone, well, saying that people can show up, which is good. And, and.
Yeah.
And telling her, I thought they were like three minutes. So it's just, you know, that the library could be potentially an eight hour meeting or, or something and. Anyway, so if we needed to curtail their speaking time, that might cause a problem. But asking everyone to sit through eight hours of a meeting is not fair either.
Peace through strength. We got somebody there.
I think that we've always been advocates to let everybody speak.
Oh, yes.
So again, I'm confused why you would think that, or whoever would think that just because there's an abundance of the public here, why there would be a, a big issue? I just, I'm really stuck on this because I didn't understand the whole, we need police, we need security. Just because there's going to be possible, I mean, the, the, there may be more than usual, maybe there's a ton. But I know our last budget meetings have been like two people, maybe three, counting Bob.
Yeah, I think it was the potential.
Right, so I will mention too that this, the conversation first started about our parking lot and needing someone to help us outside. So we, I will, I was going to say anything about, but I'll mention this, that we are identifying six parking spots in case our parking lot is full for trustees to be able to park. So we're anticipating quite a bit of a parking issue. We have, I don't know how, it's like 35 parking spots or something like that in ours plus stopping plus the public. So this initially started with parking lot concerns. And then again, when you have a lot of people for several hours in a small space. So we have done some planning for if we do have a large attendance, we have the capacity of this room. We also have wellness room. So we had actually had a program scheduled that night. And so again, we had a lot of people show up for this. And we have another program with 25 people coming, the parking lot again. So we've modified the date for that program. We've identified another space that people can watch in real time while they wait for their time to speak and comment. So we're doing things proactively in case we do have a large response.
And you know, also the, in the past, and again, I don't have a crystal ball, but in the past, the issues were over a, a very heated topic. And the budget, although people have strong opinions, aren't exactly, you know, as heated. And again, I mean, I could be way off on this, but I just really wanted to know where it all came from.
So, thank you. Okay, so back to agenda discussion and request. Katie, you'd said something, I think at our last meeting. And then we, you also mentioned scheduling a, a date for something and, and we all scheduled the date and forgot about what you said, so.
Um, what I had asked for was, I, I wanted attorney contracts to be talked about. We have apparently signed an attorney contract. But we, at that point in time, when I asked for them, there were several that all board members had asked for. And that is what I want. What I, any attorney contracts that we have, I would like that on the agenda. Any current attorney contracts. We, in the past, before a contract was signed, we always, as a board, got to sit and talk about that contract together. We never invited, I'm not asking for the attorney to be present at 275 an hour, I'm not. I, I simply wanted us to be able to talk about what does this mean for the board? The procedures for board and staff? That's what I, all I wanted. That is what we've been able to do in the past. We have a contract that, that has never been talked about on this board. I don't know what other contracts we may have for attorneys at this point in time either. But I am specifically requesting that we not, this is not, this is, if we have questions for the attorney at the end of this discussion, then we can ask somebody to, to, we can ask our director to call, you know, to ask him, but I'm not asking that. I, I'm just asking for us to be able to read the contract. And if we have questions, the same way that we talked about the U R D today. Yeah.
Turn myself on. I would like a copy of all of the contracts as well. I have the one from Boyle's Law. I don't believe we've gotten the ones from the other.
I think that was what the original thought was, that the presentation was, is that right, Alexa? A few weeks ago?
Yes, so I'm familiar with Stephen's claim the board did get in a table packet a copy of that contract. So the board does have that one. There were two, I believe, signed contracts with Boyle's Law. I'm not sure that the board has both of those. I'd have to review. I'm not, just off the top of my head, familiar with what they have. We, we don't have a.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, how about I send out all three electronically to the board?
Okay, that sounds good. And that is all, we don't have contracts with any other attorneys. We had one with Mike Gridley, but he removed himself at that meeting, is that correct?
He submitted a resignation.
He did, okay, sounds good. So that is not an active contract.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't think that we got a copy of the resignation, so I didn't, I don't think he had resigned.
Do you want a copy of the contract and the resignation?
I, we, I have the contract, the resignation with the.
Okay. It's just an email, it's not like a formal letterhead or anything that I can send.
I had two things. Looking back at a video from many months back before I was on the board, I noticed that Katie had a gavel on a block. Is that belonged to the library and it's.
It's mine.
Okay, so, so did we have Alexa purchase a new gavel and block for the chair? It looks like it's an official part of meetings, so I guess it's a typical library expenditure, I guess under office supplies.
And if you're thinking of like, if and when the crowd gets rowdy, it would be helpful.
Well, it's, it's usually used for meetings, so, and it was used in the past, I saw on, on videos, so.
I forced her to use it.
It's no fortune, it's probably $89 or something, I don't know, unless you get a, you know, gold gilded one or whatever you call it. So, now, now going, same idea now. Do we want a gavel or not? Because if we don't have three people, Alexa's not going to give it to us. Do you want a gavel?
Okay, what does that mean? If.
It means because I read the email and Tim asked for some report. And because we didn't have three people asking for, it was a report, I don't remember what, something in there. I just read it before I came down here today. And I think it was, I know you asked for an equipment list once and you asked for something else. And the email said because three people didn't ask for it, well, I didn't say three, but the board as a whole, it does need to be produced according to the statute, which, no, I don't know how efficient we want to play everything here, but Tim asked something that's pending, he wanted, I know one was a report of equipment, I believe it was in the past, I'm not finished, Katie. It was listed equipment, I think you wanted. And there was something else you just requested. And my other question right there is, do we want a gavel or not? It's not the biggest thing in the world, but if, if the board doesn't agree we need one, we're probably not going to get one.
I would hope to not, I reuse it, but yeah, I guess I'm, I'm pretty good, I guess.
I would also like to say, let's not be derogatory towards staff here, let's not set that up. I don't think that that's something that we need. And I, I just think it needs to stop now because this is public, this is in front of the public.
It was set up via email.
Excuse me, I'd like to.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I would really like us to remain as civil as we can. And so potshots like that, I don't think are useful. Whether the chair wants a gavel or not is certainly up to her.
So I'm strictly focused upon the email that came out today from the library director.
Agenda, let's just get the gavel.
Well, apparently you can't get anything done. I'm not going to put a gavel request on the agenda. And I'm not going to ask for a report via a vote to get us putting agenda for two weeks from now, whatever it is. So I don't understand how, again, I'm not sitting here rooting for Tim, but Tim asked for something. And then he's being told because the board as a whole did not ask for it, it doesn't have to be produced. So that's, that's not personal, either we are entitled to it or we're not.
It, they may not be of the same quality. They may be two different things. And so if that's an agenda item, this is a perfect time to add that to the agenda.
I, I would like, I would like to have a consensus request. I think it's all it is, it's not an agenda item, a consensus request to the library director to give me the two things I've asked for. One is the ledger activity for the last 12 months of this, or since the beginning of the year. Say, for the C I N account. That's the one that Julie brought up and we didn't get any traction on that. So the ledger activity, which I assume would show the balances each time. And the second is, what are the minimums of the carryforward CF account? The last two minimums, maybe July and January. I've asked for that about six times now and I've never got it.
Okay, I agree with that.
I think Katie wrote it.
I don't, I don't know the first thing you're, you're really asking, I don't know what that is, but yes, the other, the one, absolutely. I know you've asked for it several times. And I am pro gavel. Because it does look official and sometimes it is needed.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a consensus on Tim's bosses to request and the gavel.
The requests, are they going to be challenging for staff and users? Is there, the, I, I guess ledger activity I can see for C I N account, but the minimum of the carryforward account? I'm not sure what that question, I'm not.
Can I correct it? It's not C I N, it's the I C S account.
What's the I C, what's I C S?
I C S is the insured cash sweep account where we maintain the bulk of our funds so that we are under the F B I insurance maximums.
So what you're wanting, Tim, to know is at the low, at the lowest points of our year, do we have the sort of two months worth of, worth of? You just want to know the cash balance, so that's all, all that's being asked is that when we come down to our lowest point right before the check. And we're just talking, we're not talking about, we're just talking about the property tax, is that correct? Operational.
Cash balance in the bank.
Because the cash balance in the bank means that she's got to collect the balances of all of our asset accounts.
It was on the ledger that Julie.
This is, this is it, let me.
I am assuming that by asking for the cash balances, you just want to know how much we have. My request for clarification would be how much of restriction, restricted funds need to be removed? We have donations that are restricted for certain purposes, that those dollars are in that account. We have grants that are for specific purposes and those dollars are in that account. We also have allocated through the budget that we will spend so much money. So if we are looking at what we have available, do you want me to reduce my, what we might estimate the rest of the year to be? So that, I mean, as an estimate of what our year end carryforward is going to be?
No, I just want to know what's the minimum balances. We can take into account that there's 45,000 grant and the other, just what is the balance at the minimum right before the county payments come in?
So you just want a cash balance and you're not worried about what might be restricted funds or might be allocated funds?
We can talk about that later, but yeah. But the I, is the I C S account the same as this carryforward? I bet some.
No. Carryforward funds is it's a, it's a name, it's not an account. It is saying that of, of all the funds, all the monies you have available, you are carryforwarding into your next fiscal year to cover up to four months or up to, you know, four months plus a two month cushion, whatever you want to call it. That is different than just your account balance. They're two separate definitions.
Isn't the I C S like a bank account?
It is a bank account.
Yeah, it's not, it's like, yeah, it's, it's not an account in our ledger.
No.
Well, I mean, it's in the bal, I mean, it's in the balance.
It is, it is calculated at the audit. I can do rough calculations throughout the year, but the, the exact number that you want comes with the conclusion of the audit.
But that's, that's, that's four months before the end of the year. I want to know just how low does it go?
And I can certainly just give you the account balance and I can let you extrapolate what is restricted.
Three times, yeah, maybe, or the last two, right before the last two, three.
I, I am extremely concerned about handing that over to a brand new trustee, not, not for, not, not because I'm worried about it being out in public or anything like that. But that poor decisions will be made out of misunderstandings. And that, and that, that doesn't, that doesn't serve us well. So you, if you hand in that without also sitting down with him and talking about it, where confusions may lay, we might start making decisions based upon, based upon misunderstandings of, you know, so.
Please give it, please give it to all of us. We're all requesting it, just give it to all of us and we can talk about it.
Okay, but I don't want you to just, we need your expertise in it, is what I'm trying to say.
I'll have it available for Alexa, put it in your next packet.
You know, just to. Just to refresh our memories, this would mean so many, through so many of these iterations, how much of that carryforward was originally thought could be used?
Staff was comfortable allowing 100,000 to be used towards expenditures in the next fiscal year.
So we could reduce our carryforward?
If you should.
It, it depends on risk. We talked about E rate and how we were budgeting E rate in addition to the 100,000. So I mean, my preference would be one or the other, rather than both at the same time. And I think the board kind of leaned more towards E rate and then being able to determine if we didn't receive it, where we could look to that.
So, and so this budget shows the E rate at the discounting rate?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we all agreed on that Katie's original thing. That we would all like to have the attorney contracts and the resignation. But as far as discussing it, I, I would think that that would be important, but I'm really concerned about what happened at the post falls chamber of commerce. So I'm, based on that, not forward the discussion.
Wait, what, which part are you referring to?
I'm referring to the part where two of the trustees chose not to go into executive session and things had to be discussed and it was discussed in public and it is not polite. It, it should have been done in executive session and anyway, it just was not, not the right thing to do.
I am asking for the contracts to be discussed and not asking for any kind of invigilation. I don't think that there's any, there is no, we, we've never not been able to discuss a contract. We've always discussed a contract in public and do not discuss a contract. It, it, this is a public entity and our contracts are public knowledge. And to not be able to discuss a contract in public would be, it, it looks like you're trying to hide something. And I know that executive session doesn't cover discussion of contracts. All I'm asking is that we all get a copy of the contract, we all look at it, we all know what it is. And that any questions we have with that contract can be answered together. If we're, if we're confused about it, then we have questions that can be sent to the attorney. And that's all I'm asking. And I mean, it's been signed. And I mean, it's been signed, um, I think we need to be able to look at it. Typically, we look at contracts before they are signed. I'm just asking to look at this contract together after it has been signed. The others have been too.
Okay, well, we can look at them and questions can be directed to the attorney.
I am asking that the attorney not be here because I don't want to spend two hundred and seventy-five dollars. I am not asking for questions that, I'm asking for us to have a discussion about it. And questions then can be taken by the director to the attorney. That is also what we have typically done in the past. I don't want to pay two hundred and seventy-five dollars. He's already come here for a two and a nineteen-hundred where he didn't use anything. So, I mean, we didn't use it at all, so I, I'm not trying to do anything underhanded. I simply want to have the contract to be able to read it all together. If we all signed it and everybody's really comfortable with it, great. If there are questions, then those questions can be addressed. And that's all I'm asking.
Okay, um, does anyone else have an opinion on the discussion?
I've got a, that follow-up, if all of our contracts are public, does that mean anyone can ask for a copy of the contract?
Yeah.
Do they have to go for you? How do, how do they get a copy of it?
They do, we've had several requests.
Can I, as a trustee, ask you to give me a contract? Or do I have to come in here and get a consensus of three or more people to say, yes, please give me a contract? I would, I would like to see a contract, but I don't necessarily need to involve everybody.
So usually among trustees though, request it at the director and I'll send it out to everybody, like you saw me do with budget requests and other requests for information. Um, generally speaking, if it's already available, accessible, you know, the reports that you're asking for could take, depending on how you want it interpreted, two plus, three plus hours of an employee's time. And so that's why purchasing a gavel or something like that, that takes ten minutes. Um, putting together a custom report at the request of one trustee that hasn't been discussed. And, and again, in that case, the auditor recommended using a specific number and that's in indifference to that. And I did not hear everybody saying that they wanted to hear that, that's why I asked. Um, so other trustees ask for information, the priority would be for staff to work on items that are on a current agenda. So there are still remaining requests from trustees that I have not responded to. If it's currently on an agenda, that's going to go to the top of the list and everybody's going to get the information. So I think, um, there was a trustee that asked for information and I send it out, right? So, so that's really the protocol or the process. So it does depend on what the request is and how much time that will take and other factors like that. And if it's already been discussed in the meeting, so just to again point out that we try really hard not to reply all. We try really hard not to, you know, have a discussion and then say, I came to a different conclusion and now I want to let everybody know my new conclusion and send that out, because again, that's discussing in an email, not discussing in a meeting. So I'm really redirecting everybody back to making sure that, we kind of talked about this with the budget. If someone says, this is what I want, I need to hear other people say, and I agree too. And that's how, as a director, you're giving me guidance or direction. Um, and so again, it's a new board and we're learning. But yes, please bring your requests to meetings if it's going to take a significant amount of staff time to prepare. If it's the contract, I have it as a PDF, it takes me two minutes to send it out, if that makes sense. A gavel, two minutes, make a request. But anything that's going to take more than that, um, if it's not on the agenda and maybe slower to respond to, um, and if it's going to take a lot of time, I may need to hear it in a public meeting that more than one person's interested in that as well. And it's because the authority for trustees is not individual, it's as the group or the collective.
So I am particularly interested in some of, say, the telecommunications contract. I saw some of this in the budget, I'd like to kind of look into what we have going on. I don't think it concerns anybody else at this point, but I would like to ask for copies of the contracts we have, for the phones, for the internet, for the different. I, I, as a trustee, feel I'm entitled to see that. It's not, I'm not asking for personnel file or records of personnel. But do I have to come to the meeting and ask for that? Or can I just send you, it's just, it's just a PDF request?
You can send me an email and I'll respond to everybody having that information.
Why does everyone else need to be bothered with?
Because we're a board as a whole, we don't, right, right, so we stay on the same page. We work as a whole, not as individuals, Mr. Box.
Did, did you want to see the telecommunications contracts?
Okay, can we even tell that for a second? Because, uh, our time has run out, we would need to extend the meeting if we want to continue.
How about if I move re-adjourn?
Okay, it has been moved to adjourn. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. You get news?
I, I want to know what are we doing about Thursday?
So then we would need a, okay, so the, the motion has failed and we would need a motion to extend the meeting.
I move to extend the meeting five minutes.
Okay, it's been moved to extend the meeting in five minutes, all those in favor, say aye.
We already passed five minutes officially, so you might have to say ten minutes.
Okay, it's up to a certain time.
I will take the whole. I move to extend the meeting ten minutes if necessary.
Okay, it's been moved to extend the meeting in ten minutes, if necessary, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so, uh, motion has carried and the meeting is extended in ten minutes.
All right, we don't need to do any other meetings since we're not going to change our budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we just have our budget hearing on Thursday and we just move forward as if we've done nothing. And that is one of the reasons why I suggested that we adjourn.
Now, what's your issue about Thursday?
I want a clarification, we've ignored it and I don't, there was discussion about having other meetings and.
Yeah, we don't need other meetings since we had a motion to accept the final day construction failed.
Interesting, what I think, I, I have, I thank you, I have gotten very responsive, good response, fast response, almost everything I've asked for so far. So it's not, I just happened to notice that Tim's was being ignored today, and so I wasn't sure about the process. But I've gotten timely responses in everything I've asked for, maybe it's because mine are not timed and something, I don't know.
Yeah, so back to Katie's discussion, we've got, uh, one for it and, and one opposed.
One for what, do we?
Uh, oh, for putting it on the agenda to have a discussion on the attorneys.
Oh, and the contracts.
So two trustees can call a special meeting, so if you want to call a special meeting, there's two, I mean, that's also.
I would also think that that would apply to putting things on the agenda, if there are two people who want it on the agenda, is there anyone else?
No, I'd say, yeah, I, I would probably say yes to almost any one trustee that wants something this badly. So absolutely.
Okay, well, we usually, we've always done this like consensus, um.
That isn't true, we have put things on the agenda when only a couple of people have wanted it. If we can call a special meeting with two people, then putting something either, we will either be calling a special meeting or we can put it on the next agenda. So if two people can call a special meeting, then a similar thing to happen would be, if two people want it on the agenda, let's put it on the agenda. Why can't we not talk about a signed contract together as a board to understand? I don't understand what is the complication about that.
Okay, well, when you were chair, you'd explained that it, um, this section of the agenda was done by consensus. So I'm just going by that, like it was inaccurate.
Okay, so I am asking that this be placed on the agenda, that we simply look together at the attorney contract and the resignation, um, that we have done in the last few months.
Okay, so, who's your opinion on that?
Well, I got a thing, I, I think I have a copy of it myself and I thought it was given to everyone, I'm not certain. I would think of it, we're just guessing, so what's your question? I mean, I don't understand.
I would like to have the contract in front of us.
Um, so I, I don't understand.
I have some questions about the contract that I would like to talk over with the board and the director. As we have done in many, we always look at the contracts and if people have questions about them, we talk about them together. We've always done that with contracts. And I would like this opportunity, there, it won't change anything, the contract is signed, but I would like to simply talk about it as the board. I mean, I'm not really asking for rocket scientists here or anything. I am asking for simply something that the public is, is, I would like to be better informed about how this board is planning to use these contracts.
Okay, so do we have a consensus to put it on the next agenda?
Are you asking for it to be on the next agenda?
Yeah, or actually, I guess the seventeenth, because we wouldn't put it on the budget.
That's what I've been asking for.
Or you want it on the seventeen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I support putting it on there because, like I said, if any trustee was this adamant and everybody seems to be against her for some reason, I would like a discussion too. Are you worried that it's going to be in the public? You want it to be a private discussion, is that what you were saying?
Um, I am worried that what happened to after books fall to Chamber of Commerce, commerce would happen again.
Okay, that, that, that meeting was that meeting. That was a heated, horrible show. Uh, that's not going to just, that's not going to be a repeat, that happens. This is, she wants to have us all discuss probably paragraph by paragraph, not by page by page, like we have done in the past. So I don't understand why, why that would be so bad for everybody.
Okay, so we've got three opinions, uh, Mr. Box?
I think it's totally unnecessary, she has the contract. Ask the questions, I guess, to us, if you, they come up. I don't know why we have to have a discussion and go through publicly.
I will tell you this, that I will then be pushing for a special meeting because you guys, we have never not had, been able to have a discussion at a board meeting on a contract, ever. And the fact that this board doesn't want to seems to be, seems to be wanting to keep something from the public. That's what it does. And all I'm asking is that we take a contract that has been signed already and we look at it. It might take five minutes.
I've already looked at it and I don't have.
I have questions that I would like to talk over with the entire board.
You want to have a public discussion with things you want to bring up to us and I don't know where.
You have no idea what.
Mine, that's literally called a board.
Okay, so we have had four people, uh, express their opinion, uh, Mr. Hamley?
Um, my opinion is, I don't understand what Katie's driving at. And I guess I feel more comfortable if you had a specific question about the contract.
I do, I have.
That's all, I mean, why can't we just have the questions presented?
Exactly, could we please do what Mr. Hamley just suggested? And that we bring the, put it on the agenda so that I can bring my questions to the board concerning the contract. He, that is just what he suggested and that's exactly what I'd like.
Um, did you want the questions submitted in advance or with that?
No, I would like the discussion with the board.
I, I don't think it requires a public forum, I think there's a possibility there's an attempt to make a circus out of the, a contract.
You guys have no idea.
It's signed, there it is. If you have a question, I guess just send it to us or send it to the actual lawyer and say, can you please explain line number six to the other?
I am asking for this to be placed on the agenda. I would like to simply talk about the contract with other board members about what it means, what, I am not planning to make it some sort of circus. I am simply wanting us to take what is public information, which is a contract, and talk about it together. What does this mean?
Okay.
If I have questions.
We've had, uh, two people that want the discussion, three people that are, that aren't for it. Um, so the consensus seems to be that it will not be placed on the August seventeenth, uh, meeting.
I, I'm sorry, I have a quick question for Tom. When you said, if you have a question, send it to us, what did you mean by that?
Well, rethinking it, send it to the lawyer. We have a contract, you're allowed to contact him. I, I contacted him once or twice, had a question about something. And so I fully encourage you, if you have a question, call him and if there's some problem, I guess, let us.
I don't have a question concerning the lawyer, I have a question for the board, questions for the board concerning this contract. And why you guys don't want to talk about it in public leads me to believe that, that you are hiding this stuff. And it, it's just, it's, it's incredible to me, it just can't be talked about.
Our time is up, uh, we exceeded it by an extra five minutes, but nobody entertained that motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, that's the move to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, this unanimous and this meeting is now adjourned.